Councilmember Favor, would you please lead us?
I would like to lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is honored to have Lead Pastor of all St. Luther Church, Pastor Bonnie Gerber here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Please join with me in prayer. Good and gracious God, your word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. We praise you for the light in our darkness. We give you thanks on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for this assembled city council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of your people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Columbus. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
None at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with President Potem? Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Dorans?
No resolutions, but I did have one announcement I wanted to make. Wanted to remind folks tonight that having an event I'm hosting tomorrow in partnership with the Columbus Urban League tomorrow evening. Tomorrow evening will be the first ever Columbus Savings Expo at the Columbus Urban League at Mount Avenue, or I'm sorry, Mount Vernon Avenue from 5:30 to 7:00. The Columbus Savings Expo is designed to bring Columbus residents and multiple organizations that can help families save money in one room together. Those who attend will be able to learn about cost of these programs designed for low-income families, seniors, and anyone that's interested in keeping more of the hard-earned money in their pockets. There will be at least 22 private companies, government agencies, and community partners participating that have cost-saving resources for those who can access them. So invite folks to come out and join us at the Columbus Urban League tomorrow night. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I have Resolution 0243X-2019 to congratulate the Ohio State University College of Arts and Science, Department of African American and African Studies on 50 years of educational excellence. I'd like to invite Dr. Simone C. Drake, Chair of the Department of African American African Studies, to the podium. I am honored to present this resolution today as I was an African American Studies major during my time at the Ohio State University. And the education and opportunities I experienced through the department greatly contributed to my life and path today. The primary mission of the department is to stimulate teaching and research about the Black experience in the United States, Africa, and throughout the African diaspora, and to encourage students and others to assess various strategies for advancing human progress through the examination of the global struggle for Black freedom. The department offers courses leading to the degrees of Bachelors of Arts, Masters of Arts, and a PhD in African American and African Studies. Their comprehensive, multidisciplinary curriculum includes courses in literature, music, history, psychology, sociology, political science, community development, and the most extensive offering of African languages found at any university in the United States. The African American and African Studies Department established a community extension center in 1972, which serves as both an outreach arm in the Black community, as well as a significant resource for faculty, student research, and community engagement in the city of Columbus. For more than 20 years, the department has also been the home of research in African literature, one of the most prestigious journals in African studies. At this time, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Ms. Drake, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Harden, and Councilmember Favor, and all councilmembers. I am very pleased to receive this resolution on behalf of my Department of African American and African Studies. I think much of what I would say about the department has been covered, but I would also like to say that we are a pioneering program, one of the first in 1969, and also the first to have a global master's degree in the country. So at this time, we are getting ready to celebrate our 50th anniversary. We are planning several events over the course of this Thursday through Saturday. You can find out more information about that at our website, which is tripleas.osu.edu. But to just give a little overview, if you are invested in film, on Thursday evening at the Wexner Center for the Arts, we are hosting Ina Archer, who is the film curator at the National African American Museum of History and Culture, the Smithsonian. She will be showing a film on Black home filmmaking, and we will have a symposium this Friday where we bring back many of our alum. I actually am an alum of the graduate program, and we are bringing others from all over the country who are either faculty at universities, who are working for nonprofits like the American Kidney Fund, or who are in other types of positions that engage the social responsibility that is part of what the department does. And also on Saturday, at our Community Extension Center, we are having a community lunch. No formal program that day, but a community lunch and the urban strings will be playing. So we welcome anyone who wants to join in that celebration with us, and I look forward to the important work that the department does for the university and the larger nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. And it's important to note, if there are any alumnis out there watching, and you have not received your information about the 50-year celebration, it's key to update your address information, correct?
Yes, on the Alumni Association website. They probably have whatever you left when you graduated.
Yeah, that would be my dorm.
If that's not current, then they need new address and email, postal address and email.
Well, thank you once again, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to welcome everyone back after a very nice respite we had, and I think it should be noted that we have a high order of congratulations to our council president, who happened to get married on Saturday. So congratulations, Council President Harden. We appreciate it. And it's amazing he's here tonight. So anyway, I don't have a resolution this evening, but I would like to invite Elena Shaki, Derek Anderson, and Trent Smith to the podium. The city of Columbus recently launched Sustainable Steps, which is part of the Sustainable Columbus Initiative and focuses on promoting the small steps residents can take to improve their lives, neighborhoods, and lead more sustainable lives. I would like to turn the floor over to Elena and Derek to give us an overview, an update on the program, and how residents can get involved, and then we'll invite Trent to share a few words about Franklinton Community Energy Savers.
Thank you, Chairman Remy, President Harden, and the members of city council. We very much appreciate this opportunity to report back on all the good work that has been done during council recess and the progress that's been made as a part of Sustainable Columbus. I'm going to begin our very short and brief presentation just to remind you all about what the American cities' climate challenge is. So this is a grant opportunity that the city of Columbus won. We are part of an exclusive set of 25 cities that are working to make our climate goals real in the course of two years. So in Columbus, what that looks like is eight prioritized actions, four in the transportation sector, and four in the building sector. And we're here to report today to you on our actions in the building sector and some exciting work that, as Chairman Remy mentioned, has happened with our Sustainable Steps program. So in July, we launched our Sustainable Steps program, which is, as part of its first campaign, is really, again, to take those small steps that folks can take to lead a more sustainable future. And our first campaign is to encourage residents to complete 30,000 home energy audits before December 2020. And to do that, Assistant Director Derek Anderson will talk a little bit more about what we've been working on.
Thank you, Elena, Chairman Remy, President Harden, members of council. As we strive to get 30,000 home energy audits across the city of Columbus, one of the things that this council, as well as Mayor Genthur, has charged us to do is to always remember our neighborhoods, 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 and especially our opportunity neighborhoods. So partnering with our good friends at Columbia Gas of Ohio and AEP of Ohio, we do a program called the Community Energy Savers, where we go into communities and put a little tangible benefit to them participating in our energy efficiency programs that are offered by our utilities. In exchange for them doing that, a $35,000 grant returns back to that community that they can use on energy efficiency projects within the community. In the Linden community, where we recently finished, they had a combined goal, participation goal, of 617 points. And I'm happy to report that thanks to this council, the team at DPU, the Department of Neighborhoods, our energy, our efficient community leaders like Ms. Peg Williams from the South Linden Area Commission, and our friends at Impact Community Action, the Linden community succeeded with 1,195 points for their community, and thus they received, oh, there it is, that check for $35,000 that will go to upgrade lighting at Hamilton STEM Elementary School, as well as HVAC upgrades at the other Linden elementary schools. As we move from Linden, we come into the Franklinton and Hilltop areas, and I'm happy today to bring forth Ms. Ashley Montana, who is a Community Engagement Manager for Fuel Franklinton, and Mr. Trent Smith, the Executive Director of the Franklinton Board of Trade.
Good evening, everyone. So as Derek introduced me, I'm Ashley Montana, the Community Engagement Manager at Fuel, and I just wanted to kind of talk about the partnership that we have within the Franklinton community. We launched the Energy Savers program in Franklinton during National Night Out, which is a really big event across all neighborhoods all over the nation, and I believe we completed 90 audits during National Night Out, and so that was a great kickoff. And the Community Energy Savers have been at different community events and kind of working with the business community. So I'll kind of bring up Trent to talk about that.
Good evening, President Harden and councilmembers. We were really excited to have this kicked off in our neighborhood because, as you know, Franklinton has a lot of old buildings. And so one of the ways that we always strive to help people understand how to mitigate rising property costs is to lessen their energy costs and become more efficient. So in addition to the outreach that we've done to the residents, we've actually had 26 small businesses in the neighborhood go through with the audits. None of them have gone through with the actual upgrades yet, but it's still kind of early. And now that they have that information to chew on, they're going to be able to see what the savings would look like if they go ahead and do these upgrades and make the necessary changes to become more energy efficient. So we're very excited about the program. We're sprinting towards the finish line, and we expect to have every bit as much success as what the Linden neighborhood have, and look forward to spending our $35,000 in really productive ways. So thank you, and turn it back over to Derek.
We do all this because we want all of our young children, all of all people, all citizens of the city of Columbus, regardless of the community or neighborhood that they live in, to be able to create Sustainable Steps. And Sustainable Steps Columbus makes that happen. We encourage everyone to take the first step by completing a home energy profile. You can do so by going to the website that is located on the screen, or sustainablestepscolumbus.com, where you can fill out a home energy profile, and you too will help us take Sustainable Steps for Columbus. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to the entire team. I would encourage any Columbus resident to take the opportunity to get an energy audit. They are very valuable. There's significant savings on the back end after they've taken the time to audit your home for insulation, windows, et cetera. So it really is a valuable exercise. If you were to take that on your home, you'll find, you know, the inefficiencies and the things, especially as we're coming into the winter months. Every single home counts towards our goal of 30,000. It is exciting to report, though, that we are over halfway there, correct? And so, you know, we've done a very, very good job, but every single resident in the city of Columbus that takes the time to, the homeowner that takes the time to do this energy audit counts towards that goal. And so we would appreciate whether they're in one of the opportunity areas or any stretch of the city, that people take the time to go to sustainablestepscolumbus.com and go ahead and get that audit taken care of. It really is a valuable thing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. And I would like to announce that I will be having community hours on Tuesday, September 17th, from 4:30 to 6:00 at Tim Horton's at 1501 Olentangie River Road. Welcome anybody to come on out. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I'm going to ask for Annie Walmak to walk to the podium, please. And I have a resolution number 0249X-2019, and this is a resolution to recognize September as Sickle Cell Month in the city of Columbus and to support the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association in their efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. Whereas sickle cell disease is an inherited blood disorder that affects nearly 100,000 people in the United States, sickle cell disease causes red blood cells to form into a crescent shape like a sickle. Sickle cells live only 10 to 20 days instead of the normal 120 days that regular blood cells live. The damaged sickle cells may cause serious health problems, including restricted blood flow, tissue and organ damage, prolonged episodes of intense physical pain, stroke, blindness, vision problems, and increased susceptibility to infection. Whereas sickle cell disease is particularly common among those ancestors who came from sub-Saharan Africa, Spanish-speaking regions in the West Hemisphere, South America, the Caribbean, and Central America, Saudi Arabia, India, and the Mediterranean countries such as Turkey, Greece, and Italy. And whereas one of every 365 African-American children is born with sickle cell disease. And whereas the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association was incorporated in 1977 and was originally established for the purpose of providing a payment mechanism for medically indigent adults with sickle cell disease. And whereas the mission of the Ohio Sickle Cell Health Association is to provide education, advocacy, and statewide support to individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease, this is achieved by focusing on education, testing, counseling, providing referrals, support, and various advocacy initiatives. Whereas sickle cell disease has been recognized as a global public health priority with international resolutions being passed by the African Nation, UNESCO in 2005, the World Health Organization, and the United Nations. And be it resolved by this council, the city of Columbus, and this council does hereby recognize September as Sickle Cell Month in the city of Columbus. And be it further resolved that this council supports the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association in its efforts to educate, advocate, and support individuals and families affected by sickle cell. I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Annie, the floor is yours.
And thank you. Thank you, President Harding, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, I thank you for honoring Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association the month of September, and I am proud to share this month, and I do see on the agenda of the childhood cancer. So any other hemoglobin or birth defect or birth disorder, we are, again, striving to find a cure, but we know that that's really far from here, and I appreciate the efforts that you have put in there personally, Councilwoman Tyson, with your family and your son being affected by sickle cell disease. So we appreciate your advocacy and always being on the forefront and allowing us to use you in the community and over the state with PSAs, commercials, and we appreciate your testimony and your own personal story to add to many others that are here in the state of Ohio. So we appreciate you, and we accept this, I accept this humbly on behalf of all of the families across the great state of Ohio, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Annie, for what you're doing. Talk about your event that's coming up.
Well, we have several events, but since this is Franklin County, and for you, those of you who don't know, that in my spare time, I run a state agency. I know that I'm down here in many capacities, but my heart is with the Ohio Sickle Cell and Health Association, where we charge with all ADA counties. But here in Franklin County, on the 21st, we have our annual walk, run, and jog for sickle cell, which will be held in the historic King Lincoln Bronsville neighborhood, right across from the historic Lincoln Theater, and that's from 8:00 to 8:00. We've coupled with the Eric Carmichael Rib Fest so that we can all just come out and celebrate and bring advocacy and awareness to sickle cell disease.
And what time is the event?
That goes from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And to sign up for the event, what can residents do?
OhioSickleCell.org. I can call Ms. Tyson herself, who's a great advocate. OhioSickleCell.org or 614-228-0157.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you for your support in helping other organizations that are in Columbus, nonprofit organizations that are focused on this particular, on sickle cell disease. The last comment I'd just make is that sickle cell is a disease that requires individuals to have ongoing blood donations.
Yes, ma'am.
For individuals to give blood. And it really is important, and we talk about, think about blood and blood being universal. There are differences in the blood because of genetics, our genetics are different. And so we really do need more individuals of color to donate blood, to donate blood. And because when you don't have individuals of color that donate and people who need blood, like my son gets blood every six weeks, so he would not be alive today if individuals were not donating blood. And they basically remove the majority of his blood every six weeks that's left and put in new blood for him to be able to survive. And so, but what also happens is that when you don't have people of color who donate blood, you could also have different antibodies that your body will, you know, your body will have antibodies in your blood which prevent you from also then getting blood from different donors. So I am encouraging individuals who may be listening and viewing city council to reach out to the Red Cross. They have a diversity program because they know this is an issue in our community. And, but I'm very thankful. It is a disease that a lot of people don't live past their adolescence, and I'm, we're very blessed. My son will be 37 in September, this month, and not that we have significant challenges, significant challenges, however, to get to that milestone is pretty significant. So again, I will bring an award next week because we got an award on Friday, city council dinner, and I'm at home, I'll bring it next week to showcase that. But again, I thank you for your advocacy, and there is a lot of work that's going on in this disease to try to turn this around for young people. The last thing I'll make, I know I'm talking about so much, the last thing is that get tested. If you are a person of color and you're thinking about having a child, go and get tested to see if you are a sickle cell carrier, if you have, you should know by now if you have sickle cell disease, but a carrier, a carrier. Because you can prevent individuals, children from containing to be born with this disease if you go and get tested. Now, my story, I was tested. I was tested, and I still have a son with sickle cell. So that's because I'm supposed to be advocating, everything happens for a reason. But anyway, all I say is, get tested because you do not want to have to have, to go through what my son's gone through, other children have gone through, and we don't want to put Annie out of a job. We'd find another place for you to work. You can put her out of the job. I'll be good with it. We find another place for you to work. We find another place for you to work. Thank you. Again, thank you for your work, and I appreciate you. Thank you. All right.
I do have an announcement, and it is from regarding Columbus Public Health, that get a free flu shot at Columbus Public Health on September the 25th. I'm saying it now so people will remember. It is September the 25th, flu season is riding around the corner, and a flu shot is the best way to prevent the flu. Columbus Public Health is helping protect your health this flu season by holding a free, free flu shot clinic, September 25th, from 11:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Columbus Public Health at 240 Parsons Avenue. So again, mark your calendars on the 25th, 11:00 to 7:00. See me there. I'll be there getting my flu shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf, and your work on behalf of sickle cell awareness today. I'm going to join you in co-declarating this month as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month as well, so thank you for your leadership. So this evening, I have a resolution 0236X-2019, and it's to declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Columbus. I'd like to invite Dr. Timothy Kreip, Ms. Holly Yont, and Director Mary Taylor to come forward. Mike Shaddick, would you come as well? Forty-three children per day are diagnosed with cancer in the United States. There are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time. There are hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the Friends of Faith Prudential Foundation, that are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more has to be done to raise awareness and certainly to find a cure. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Dr. Kreip or Director Taylor, both who are, Dr. Kreip, who's been leading this work on the local level here at Children's Hospital. Dr. Kreip, welcome.
Thank you, President Harden and members of the council, and thank you for your advocacy this evening for children's health. I'm the Chief of the Division of Hematology, Oncology, and Blood and Marrow Transplant. We take care of over 450 patients in our program each year with sickle cell disease and close to 500 patients at any one time with cancer. As you may know, so we're very much interested in both of these resolutions and appreciate your time and support. As you may know, children's cancer is a problem nationally and world- As you may know, children's cancer is a problem nationally and worldwide. It is the leading cause of death due to disease in kids outside of the prematurity period. So that in and of itself is a reason to garner our attention. We need to take care of our children. Over 500 patients in Ohio are diagnosed each year with cancer, and we take, see about 200 new patients each year at Nationwide Children's Hospital, and we are affiliated academically with the Ohio State University. So we appreciate the support that Columbus and the surrounding communities have given us over the years, and that has helped us elevate our program so that this year, in fact, U.S. News and World Report ranked our cancer program the highest in Ohio and among the top four in the country. So we're very honored, and we couldn't do it without community support like yours. And there's, it's not all bad news because there is hope. Research does cure cancer. We've raised the survival of childhood leukemia from zero 50% 50 years ago to 90% today, but we still have a lot of work to do, obviously. So that is a testimonial to the power of research. Research can cure cancer, and why we need more advocacy and more dollars. No better way to hear it, though, than from someone who's experienced the diagnosis of cancer in the family, so I'd like to introduce you to Jonah's mother, Hallie Young.
Thank you, President Harden, and council members for having me. My name's Hallie. I am a blessed mom of two. I have a two-year-old Everett and my cancer warrior, Jonah. He is four years old. He'll be five October 3rd. But Jonah was born October 3rd, 2014, and for the first three and a half years of his life, he was a seemingly normal, healthy kid. He had a couple little hiccups, likes to keep us on our toes. But at the beginning of March of 2018, I, I'm a NICU nurse, I was a nurse, I can kind of have the medical background, but his coloring was off. He looked very pale to me. He was more tired, he was a lot more agitated, and he had a birthmark right here on his head, and that started to disappear. So my youngest, who had just turned one, was sick. I took him to the pediatrician, and I said, hey, can you just check his, my oldest son, Jonah's hemoglobin, let's see what it is. They took it, said it's all, it's probably nothing, but it was 5.2, normal is 11 to 14, so it was very low. So he said, oh, we'll check it again next week. We, that was on a Friday, we checked it again on Wednesday, it was 4.3. So at that point, he referred us to the Hematology, Oncology Unit at Nationwide Children's. They had originally set an appointment up for the next day on Thursday, but in my gut, I was like, something's going on, something's wrong. So I got a call later from a nurse practitioner, and she said, oh, why don't you just come to the ER now? That's when it all started, Wednesday night. He had, it took five attempts to put an IV in him. He was three and a half, he didn't know what was going on. It was just heartbreaking. He had so many tests. They took blood smears, and there was no leukemia in his blood. So we were hopeful that it was just a virus or something crazy going on. But then after more tests and a bone marrow biopsy on Friday, we learned at about 4:30 PM, Dr. Jaeger and Dr. Kumar came walking into my son's room and told us that he was positive for pre-b-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia. As you can imagine, as a parent, that could flip your world upside down in a heartbeat. I was a NICU nurse at Children's, I quit my job, my husband came, our sole provider. It's a big lifestyle change, and we had a one-year-old, a new one-year-old, so there was a lot going on. So after he got diagnosed on Friday, on the following Monday, he had a port placed, it's right here on his sternum, right in the middle, he calls it his Iron Man. If you've seen Iron Man, you know what that is. And they started chemo that day. And then we started the lovely first 29 days of what they call induction, and my husband and I not so fondly call it Hell Month. And I'm kind of joking about it, but it truly was. They put these children on extreme high doses of steroids, and if you've ever heard the term roid rage, it happens in kids, too. I had bruises and scratches and everything on me because he just couldn't control his little emotions. He didn't know what was going on, people were just poking and prodding him. So we had that for the whole 29 days. And then at the end, on the day 29, he caught what would have been a stomach bug for all of us, just last a couple days, but it wiped him out. He was in the hospital for a week and a half, he stopped walking, he was potty trained, he went all the way back down to diapers. I had to teach my three-and-a-half-year-old and my one-year-old at the same time how to walk. So that, if you could imagine, that was not fun, it was very hard for us. The next eight months after induction, there's several different phases, but it was pretty much depending on the phase you were in, you were there at the hospital getting chemo three times a week or once every 10 days, just depending where you were. But during that eight months, nine months total, we couldn't be around kids, we couldn't go to our family events, we couldn't do holidays, he couldn't start preschool, just because kids don't know not to share their germs. So we were quarantined, we didn't do anything, we didn't go to church, we didn't go anywhere, he didn't go anywhere. But finally, right before Christmas, it was the best Christmas present, we got into the maintenance phase, which is what he is in currently, and he will remain in until June of 2021, June 14th, if you want to know. That phase, they've actually just recently changed it through research, it was every single month, he would go in and get chemo through his port. He takes a daily chemo medicine, a weekly chemo medicine, and now they recently changed it to every three months, he gets chemo through his port and a spinal tap with chemo in it. So it's still a lot, and he still goes through a lot, but he can be out in the world, we can, he started preschool this year, we get, he's not here because we're going to Disney World for his Make-A-Wish trip on Wednesday, and I didn't want to risk it getting sick. But, but it's still a lot, still a few spikes of temperature of 100.5. Normally, parents would be like, meh, that's nothing. We have to go to the hospital, we have to go to the ER, we have to get two rounds of antibiotics, and hopefully not an admission. But in his short year and a half battle so far of leukemia, he has had a port placement surgery, a fibron sheath removal, which is another invasive procedure, two bone marrow biopsies, 11 spinal taps, eight blood transfusions, two platelet transfusions, six trips to the ER, seven hospital stays. He's lost his hair twice, and we have had a relapse scare, but luckily that turned out just fine. I would like to say that as heartbreaking and awful as it is as a parent, because I'm supposed to be the protector, watching my son go through this, my family and I consider ourselves very blessed, he has a 90% cure rate. A lot of families don't have that. They don't have 90%. And this, as that list I just wrote off sounds like a lot, people go through way more. We are so blessed, and we just need more funding so that these other kiddos can have higher cure rates, just like my son does. So we're holding on to that 90% and forgetting about the 10%, and that's it. He's doing great today. Like I said, he's in preschool, and we're going to Disney World, so. That's all I have. I want to introduce Mary Taylor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Mary Taylor, and I was a first-grade teacher in Westerville, and I had a student named Faith Prudential, and Faith changed my life completely. She entered my school year in August, and I didn't know her or her family, and now I can say her family is family to us. Faith, in the spring, she was diagnosed on a Wednesday with brain cancer. She went home from school Wednesday, and Wednesday night, they knew that she had cancer. And on Friday, when I got to go see her after school, she was a different child. But she still would show her little spunky self, she was very ornery and spunky, and we spent a lot of time together, and Faith asked me to make her a promise, two, actually. She was only six years old, she had turned seven just a couple weeks before she passed. And even though we never told her directly, she knew that she wasn't going to make it. And she asked me to promise her I would never let anyone forget her. So of course I said, you've got it. And I had to come up with a way, so I started the Friends of Faith Prudential. Actually, I started a memorial scholarship in Westerville, which then turned into my nonprofit Friends of Faith Prudential Foundation. And through the foundation, we help families like Hallie's because so many parents have to quit a job or jobs and take care of their child, so we help with things, non-medical needs and expenses and support. But we also, with my promise to Faith, to make the gold ribbon as popular as the pink ribbon, as she said, we do a lot of gold ribbon awareness. Faith and I, we had a lot of our time together, and we saw gold, or, excuse me, pink ribbons, and she asked me, she knew gold was the color for childhood cancer because we made shirts with her name on it. And she said, why are there no gold ribbons, there's only pink ribbons? And I said, well, I really don't know. And she said, well, you promised to make them popular. So with that, I do a lot of gold ribbon awareness, and we started several years ago. I worked on petitions and got a gold ribbon license plate, finally approved and with the BMV. And literally, over the four years, it kind of evolved from the gold ribbon to now it's a gold ribbon with a butterfly, it's our logo, because one of the reps at Children's that I was working with, she said, well, I was exploring your Facebook and your website, and I like that ribbon. And I said, okay. Although that our ribbon is on it, it's very inclusive, we wanted to make sure we included all people with childhood cancer with the funds that the BMV gives. So the money raised through the BMV goes to the Center for Childhood Cancer at the Research Institute at Nationwide Children's Hospital. And I'm very, very proud that we were able to get that. It's under gold ribbon awareness, when you look on the BMV, people look for childhood cancer, but because that's how it started, and the state rep, Ann Gonzalez, helped me write the bill, and so that's how it started, and although it evolved to more of the childhood cancer, it says on the bottom, it is the gold ribbon awareness plate. And before I leave, I really am appreciative for you for the proclamation. I have worked tirelessly trying to ask many cities to please make a proclamation and let everyone know more about childhood cancer because it doesn't get the recognition that it should. And Westerville, where I taught, has done it for years, and I've gotten to know the former mayor, and she and I talked and brainstormed, and we asked the new mayor, Trentef, and he said, well, let's send it out to all my people, I'm not sure what they would be called, but his colleagues. And we started from there, and we've been asking a lot of cities, and you are amongst, and of course, our biggest, and we appreciate it. I brought gold ribbons for everybody here, and I'm hoping that you would wear them for the month of September, and I know we share the month, and we also share the month with a couple other, a couple other things, but I'm hoping that you would wear a gold ribbon, and people will say, what's the gold ribbon for? And you can tell them. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work, and thank you to my new friend, Mike, for making this possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Kreip. Thank you, Mary, to Mike Shattuck and to Ms. Hallie. Thank you for coming and sharing your story and using your life experience to help others. We, as a council, stand and encourage folks to fund more research, and please, please pass along to our Iron Man, Jonah, the best wishes for an amazing, amazing trip to Disney World this week. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Adopted.[1425.30][1425.30](applause) Are there any other comments from by our elected officials? Thank you. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from consent portion to action of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now get a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by city clerk? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee, ordinance is 2223-2019, 2261, and 2262-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 1471, 1661, 2070, 2080, 2118, 2139, 2155, 2169, 2173, 2185, 2199, 2208, and 2232-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance 2175 and 2179-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2085, 2252, 2253, and 2284-2019. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 2202, 2264, 2265, 2266, 2267, 2268, 2269, 2270, and 2271-2019. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 2220, 2225, 2226, 2278, and 2283-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the, no, some consent, I'm sorry. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent. Action, will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 232X, 241X, 245, 246, 247, 248, 233, and 234X-2019. Finance Committee, ordinance is 2106, 2142, 2150, 2154, 2157, 2165, 2174, 2183, 2207, 2227, 2238, 2239, and 2285-2019. Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee, ordinance 2215-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2197, 2242, and 2260-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance 2180-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 227X-2019, and ordinance is 2117, 2156, 2158, 2176, 2184, 2222, 2257, 2282, 2296, and 2297-2019. Housing Committee, ordinance is 2121, 2233, and 2234-2019. Economic Development Committee, Resolution 230X-2019. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 2181, 2186, 2190, 2198, 2255, and 2256-2019. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0141, 142, 143, and 144-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 2121.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, resident of the North London area. I'm speaking in against of 2112, 163 South Ogden Avenue, to how long it has been in the land bank and why is for emergency. There's only two questions I've got, thank you for your time.
Mr. Wilkins, if it's okay, I will have, we will follow up on this ordinance. We didn't get the request beforehand, and I don't know, Director, if you're prepared. We'll make sure to get you a written response and have that response copied to the council members as well. Are there any other comments or questions on the consent portion of the agenda by council members? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson. President Harden.
The agenda items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by President Pro Tim Brown. All members serve on that committee.
Thank you. Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we are starting with ordinance 2149-2019, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase turnout gear with Lion First Responder PPE Incorporated, to waive the applicable competitive bidding requirements of City Code Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation, BRPO 001107, and to declare an emergency. Turnout gear is the outer layer of a firefighter's uniform, and it is their first line of def-. Turnout gear is the outer layer of a firefighter's uniform, and it is their first line of defense. It is also referred to as personal protective equipment and includes their jacket and pants. The contract expires on September 30th, and emergency action is requested to prevent delays in purchasing this gear. Director Lombardi, can you note for us the RFP process for this contract and the waiver of competitive bidding?
It's been a while. Hang on. Okay. All right, we're good. Thanks, President Pro Tem Brown, President Harden, members of council. As you indicated, turnout gear is most important for our firefighters. This is the equipment that they wear when they're out in the trenches and fighting fires on our behalf and being... Trying to save folks. We did an RFP process because of the complexity of the turnout gear. But before we made the code allow for RFPs for commodities, we started this process. So that's why we had to waive competitive bidding because it was not available to us in the City Code at the time that we started this.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2259-2019, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with appropriate universal term contracts and to establish various purchase orders for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division, per the terms and conditions of previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The City of Columbus operates a fleet of approximately 6,000 vehicles. This year, the Fleet Management Division budgeted $9.7 million for fuel. 4.4 million has already been spent or encumbered. This authorization is specifically for purchases of fleet by individual vehicles through the services provided by Wex Bank. Emergency action is being considered to ensure an uninterrupted supply of fuel for our city vehicles. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
All right, so now these next 12 ordinances... Put on your seatbelt, folks. ...authorize Auditor Kilgore to issue and sell bonds to fund the projects approved by council in this year's capital budget and to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city. Providing this funding for capital projects is one of the most direct ways we improve our neighborhoods. And I want to thank Auditor Kilgore for her work ensuring that the city is utilizing this funding in the most efficient way possible. Everything from repaving roads to work on our recreation and parks facilities, to building new police and fire stations, to maintaining and updating our sewer and water systems is included. These dollars and projects make a substantial impact on quality of life for Columbus residents. I want to thank this council and Mayor Ginther and the administration for the hard work in putting together the capital budget earlier this year. Auditor Kilgore, tonight, can you please share more about your process for issuing these bonds, especially the cost savings realized for taxpayers and the city through the advance refund of certain bonds?
And certainly Finance Director Joe Lombardi, please chime in on the expenditure side as well. Majority of these ordinances are for the traditional kind of bread and butter projects of the city. That includes public utilities, a lot of public service, information services, refuse collection, and so forth. These are the new money projects that council has already authorized via the capital plan and what the administration has prioritized as part of the funding needs for 2019. In addition, the last three ordinances for your consideration tonight are for refundings. And right now, as you can see on the... Every bit of national news, economic indicators, interest rates, especially for longer-term bonds, are at record lows. And I feel like every time I say record low, they get a little bit lower. So I'm going to say it like four times tonight. The better the rates do, the simply the more the city can save. And just as you might have a home mortgage where you lock in a certain interest rate, maybe a few years later, if the rates are lower, you can take advantage of a refunding opportunity. That's what the city has before today. And so council members, we're asking for your approval of these ordinances. They're a not-to-exceed amount because very simply, if the market moves more favorably, we want to be able to lock in more savings and perhaps refund additional bonds. We will make these decisions up until the time of pricing, which will not be until early October. But it's every single day a very dynamic endeavor. We will be very strategic, but your authorization today gives us a not-to-exceed amount that we can work within. And just to give you a little parameter, what we did is we selected the outstanding bonds from typically the years 2010 and 2013, a lot of different candidates. And we also made the assumption that there might be a 25 basis point or 0.25% improvement in the market. If that happens, terrific, that'll even open up more candidates for our opportunity. Today, if the market stays about as it is today, the refunding would produce just about $9.2 million in savings, which was a tremendous amount of savings that would be spread across income tax, water projects, sewer projects, and so forth. Happy to answer any questions that you have. And in terms of the timing, the Finance Director and I spent with Director Shoney and a few of our other colleagues, like Director Davies, a good six hours with Standard and Porch today and had a very good conversation. Tomorrow, Moody's is visiting the city. And Kelsey was a part of that from your office as well, Chair Brown. It was a very, very good conversation. And our job is to tell the great story of the City of Columbus. And thanks to a lot of partnerships, it was a really good day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Auditor Kilgore. Any questions for the auditor or the director? All right, well, then we will move into these 12 ordinances. Ordinance 2243-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $23,150,000 for public safety and health-related projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request a waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2244-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $24,370,000 for recreation and park-related projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request a waive second reading.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2245-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $59,300,000 for transportation and refuse projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2246-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $72,200,000 for water, storm, and power projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2247-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $93,800,000 for public utilities. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Or I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2248-2019, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $20,580,000 for construction management projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2249-2019, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $6,135,000 for information services projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2250-2019, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,875,000 for economic and community development projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2251-2019, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the Office of the City Auditor projects. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2275-2019, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds in an amount... Federally taxable in an amount not to exceed $79,925,000 for the purpose of providing funds to advance refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2276-2019, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds federally taxable in an amount not to exceed $46 million for the purpose of providing funds to advance refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2299-2019, to authorize the transfer of not to exceed $55 million from the City of Columbus Sewer Revenue System Reserve Fund, Fund 6102, for the purpose of a portion of the city's outstanding sewerage system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2014, originally issued in the aggregate principal amount of $204,25,000. Section 441B of the City Charter, I request to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thanks for your patience, everyone. And that's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Mitch Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember LaFleur Jauris.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have ordinance 2219-2019, to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget to authorize the City Auditor to transfer funds between projects within the safety's capital improvement budget, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of the fibrillators on behalf of the Division of Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize an expenditure of $773,290.75 from the Safety Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Ask Director Pettis, would you please speak to the issue regarding competitive bidding or the waiver of competitive bidding, sir?
Thank you, Chairman Brown, President Harden, members of council. This purchase is recommended to be made with a waiver of formal bidding requirements as Zoll Medical Corporation is offering special pricing that exceeds the savings offered in their current state term pricing. This bid waiver would also result in a more expedient process to replace existing aging defibrillators currently in use by the Division of Fire. The ordinance also authorizes the waiver of the surplus property requirements of the City Code as Zoll's pricing reflects the trade-in of existing equipment that is nearing the end of its useful life cycle. Indisputable evidence has proven that high-quality CPR is the primary component in influencing survival from cardiac arrest. Zoll offers real-time audio and visual feedback on CPR quality. It's built on an expandable platform. It meets EMS needs now and in the future. And disposable items cost about 20% less than the Physio brand currently in use by the Division. Zoll uses rectilinear biphasic waveform, or RBW, and at only 200 joules, it delivers more average current to the patient. And Zoll has integrated Wi-Fi and Bluetooth technology. This will allow real-time data to be transmitted to hospitals in our near future.
If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Also, this evening, I have 2314-2019, to authorize the City Auditor to transfer funds within the Safety Initiative Fund, to authorize the Safety Director to enter a contract with Modern Technologies to establish a virtual reality training pilot program within the Divisions of Police and Fire, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $81,000 from the Safety Initiative Subfund, and to declare an emergency. Again, Director Pettis, would you speak to the issue regarding competitive bid waiver?
Chairman Brown, President Harden, members of council, thank you. The virtual reality training pilot program will be limited in scope as it will provide an experimental environment to evaluate effectiveness of this technology as a training tool. The Division of Police has identified recruit firearms proficiency requirement to be the focus of their pilot. Each year, recruits from the Division are required to demonstrate proficiency with a firearm as a requirement for graduation. The identified pilot program would create a virtual shooting range in which recruits and training staff could identify weaknesses and approve upon mistakes. The virtual component will provide recruits with a realistic training scenario in which to improve their abilities while reducing the use of expensive ammunition. In addition, training staff will have the capability to insert variables into the module, such as weather, lighting, visibility, to best prepare recruits for the variables they will face as officers. The Division of Fire has identified arson and fire investigation training to be the focus of their pilot. Fires are destructive and consume the evidence of their initiation as they grow. Investigators examine the fire scene and collect physical evidence to determine the cause of the fire, whether arson or accidental. Much of the expertise needed to successfully execute these difficult tasks relies on on-the-job, in-field training. Thus, investigators are dependent on real-life fires to train and further enhance their skills. Training in mock environments using virtual reality will provide investigators much greater flexibility, both in place and time, to conduct training.
Thank you, Director Pettis. Is there any questions from my colleagues? President Harden, yes, sir.
Not a question. I just want to congratulate you on your leadership and just give my appreciation. I'm very excited about this technology and look forward to hearing back from the director and from you, Chair, on the results of this pilot. And I think I'm also excited, I think that this is a minority firm that developed this technology, which is something that I'm very pleased about.
It's a new form of way in which we deal with training. You put the goggles on, and you have a hand-controlled device, and it monitors everything you do. It's a very, very special... It's a new toy, and I'm excited about trying to figure out how I can learn it myself.
We provide another tool to the best-trained fire and police force in the country, and so we hope this will help keep them safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If the... President Harden, I would like to move on to Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee legislation, if I may, please.
We got to pass.
We got to pass. I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Now, sir. May I move on to veterans? Thank you. Veterans and Senior Affairs, 2221-2019, to authorize the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $12,301,000 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for the operation of the various grant programs administered by the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Reamie?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson? President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed with noted exemption.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember LaFleur Jauris.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 2172-2019, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Public Service, Division of Infrastructure Management, to enter to contract with Southeastern Equipment Company for a paver with a tray... Company for a paver with a trailer to improve the roadways of Columbus, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of up to $221,700 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund, Fund 2266, and to declare an emergency. Southeastern Equipment Company was the only bidder to submit a bid with the paver and trailer together. However, the vendor did not submit its exceptions to the bid in the allocated time, which makes them non-responsive, requiring a bid waiver. The bid waiver for Southeastern Equipment Company allows the Division of Infrastructure Management to receive the new paver with a trailer around the time of the new mill machine, which work in tandem to improve roadways in Columbus. Are there any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2218-2019 to authorize the City Attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real property interest necessary to timely complete the arterial street rehabilitation Hamilton Road, I-70, to Refugee Project, and to declare an emergency. The City Attorney pursuant to Columbus City Code Section 909.03 served notice to all owners of the real estate of the project's public purpose and necessity. However, the City Attorney was unable to either locate some of the real estate owners or agree with some of the real estate owners in good faith regarding the amount of just compensation. The City attends for the real estate's acquisition to help make, improve, or repair certain public right-of-way in the vicinity of Hamilton Road between Refugee Road and I-70, which will be open to the public upon completion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
I thank you, President Harden. May I please move on to Criminal Justice and Judiciary?
Please.
We have ordinance number 2191-2019 to authorize and direct the Administrative and Presiding Judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to accept and grant award from the State of Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction with the purpose of providing funding to the probation and pre-trial services department, to appropriate $2147,440 from the unappropriate balance of the General Government Grant Fund to the Franklin County Municipal Court, and to declare an emergency. This grant will provide continuing support for 11 existing probation officers and one supervisor, who will provide pre-trial assessments and supervision to defendants in custody awaiting arraignment in municipal court. The grant will also pay for continued services through Alvis Incorporated, including safe house residential beds, move-in kits, and three facilitators. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
By voice, please.
Is there a second? Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Reamie?
Ms. Tyson?
Stay.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance passed.
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The next and final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 2170-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health for the Minority Health Grant Program in the amount of $42,500 to authorize the appropriation of $42,500 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health is focused on four core competencies: monitor and report the health status of minority populations, inform, educate, and empower, mobilize, community partnerships, and develop policies and plans. As a result of the Minority Health Grant Funding of 2018, we served 604 organizations and provided services to 23,000 residents. This included 7,574 interpretation and translation services, provided 65 reviews of cultural documents, 34 plannings completed, cultural humility, emergency preparedness, neighborhood best practices, enact, interpretation, knowledge matters, and your health matters impacting 655 individuals. There are nearly 50 local stakeholders who served on the Minority Health Advisory Council Committee, excuse me, throughout the city of Columbus, and this committee meets six times a year to learn about the current health initiatives and to discuss health-related issues to provide feedback on the integration of services for minority populations. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2182-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $125,000 for the Child Injury Prevention Grant Program, and to authorize the appropriation of $125,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This project will work with the Franklin County Suicide Coalition to develop a strategic plan to decrease youth suicides in Franklin County, and will assist the Coalition with the implementation of evidence-based strategies. The other component of this legislation will support the work and create policies for the Children Child Passenger Safety Toolkit, and work with Franklin County agencies to implement the policies, and work on more in-depth with the Franklin County Car Seat Fitting Stations to increase the community's awareness and availability of locations. The public can get their car seats checked by a certified child passenger technician. The only other comment I'll make on this is that for the youth suicide component, the target audience is Franklin County children from 6 to 17 years old, and there are approximately 288,000 children teens in Franklin County could be impacted by this grant. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2254-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, which is known as WIC, in the amount of $6,632,728, to authorize the appropriation of the $6,632,728 from the unappropriate balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. The primary objective of the WIC program is to provide nutritionally desirable food and nutrition education to pregnant and lactating women, infants, and children at the nutrition risk, excuse me, in Franklin County who meet categorical income and nutritional risk requirements for eligibility. The Franklin County WIC program serves 30,124 clients and offers 14 different locations throughout the city, including the Columbus Public Health. They operate nine clinics, and Nationwide Chilts operates five clinics. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. I really just want to highlight ordinance that passed earlier on consent, and it's ordinance number 2255-2019, and it is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Health in the amount of $258,500 for Moms and Babies First Black Infant Vitality Program. And this grant would be coordination of culturally-specific home visitation program that provides in-home, family-centered, and family-centered service coordination, education services to high-risk, low-income African-American pregnant women and their infants to age one who reside in 14 specific zip codes. And those zip codes are 43068, 4303, 43204, 05, 06, 07, 11, 13, 15, 19, 22, 23, 24, 27, 28, 29, and 32. And the purpose of this is to make sure that we're supporting preventive health and prenatal practices, early access and use of OB-GYN and primary care, initiation of healthy behaviors, nutrition, safe sleep, breastfeeding, immunizations, and setting family goals. If you live in those zip codes, please contact Lori Ruffin of 614-645-7638. Again, this is, you know, we have an ongoing effort to reduce infant mortality in our communities, and this is a way to do that.
That's right.
So, thank you very much. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I ask for recess, just want to thank Clerk Levin's Department of Technology and the Department of, or Facilities and Finance for overseeing a council cleanup and refresher over break. I think it'd been a long time before, since it's last been done, so thank you for that. I have a motion to recess, to adjourn. I apologize, we're done. Motion to adjourn. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
Regular meeting number 43 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking for council on zoning and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, excuse me, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. And we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. Thank you. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 2187-2019 to grant a variance for the provisions of Sections 3333.02, AR-12, AR-LD, and AR-1, Apartment Residential District, 3333.09, area requirements, 3333.11, AR-LD, area district requirements, 3333.15C, basis of computing area, 3333.16, fronting, 3333.22, maximum side yard required, 3333.23, minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard required. 3333.23, minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Code for the property located at 76 West Star Avenue, to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house, on the rear of a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the AR-LD Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Todd Hensel. The proposed use is a carriage house on a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and Victorian Village Commission's recommendation is approval 4 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my staff, I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2189-2019 to rezone 4975 Gender Road, being 1.2 acres located on the west side of Gender Road, 120 feet north of Chelsea Glen Drive, from the LM Limited Manufacturing District to the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Jay Johnson Investments LLC. The proposed use is a self-storage facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Southeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval 7 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And the last ordinance this evening is 2303-2019 to amend ordinance number 1695-2019, which we passed July 1 of 2019, for property located at 259 Park Road, by replacing the Sections 2 and 3 with correct references to the height, district, and building height for the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The, this is to amend the ordinance amendment, the proposed use of the multi-unit residential development as self-storage facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommendation is approval 7 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to amend, move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reamie, Tyson, President Harden.
Amend it.
Thank you. And lastly, I move for passage.
Please call the row.